I will call the meeting to order. I would ask if everyone could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Next on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. We were going to do recognition tonight with Melody Reese, but unfortunately she couldn't make it tonight, so we're going to postpone that for a little bit and make sure that she can be here. She won the Mass World War I Centennial Commission Award for John Nichols School, so we wanted to recognize her, and so we will do that. Up next, discussion item. Owen, my friend.
After the freshmen finished their Biology MCAS after taking Biology Semester One, and the rest of them will take it in May, congratulations to them for finishing and thank you for working so hard. The college planning process for the class of 2020 has already begun, as they have had their first guidance-led college planning session at night in the auditorium. The Student Council is sending a delegation to the Massachusetts Association of Student Council's Spring Conference next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday at the Hyannis Resort and Conference Center. Students will listen to guest speakers, attend student-led workshops, and campaign for Shannon Hurley as she runs for state president, and we're excited to bring back what we will learn to MHS. And finally, winter sports are finishing up with postseason play. Our hockey and girls' basketball teams both qualified for their tournaments. Hockey lost a 3-2 overtime heartbreaker to Rockland after making a strong push in the final stretch of the season to make the tournament. And yesterday, girls' basketball traveled to Madison Park Vocational Technical School in Boston and returned with a 31-point victory. They play Saturday at 4:00 p.m. at Aponequit, so we want a big crowd there. And as far as wrestling, Jacob Studley and Jaden Estrada both moved on to New England's this weekend in Providence. Jake Studley won the D3 state championship for the 170-pound weight class as well. Good luck to our wrestlers and girls' basketball team as they compete this weekend.
Any questions for Owen? I would point out that I believe I am correct. That is the first win in the tournament for the girls since 1972.
Yeah, he went back in the records to '72, and that's the earliest one they could find. And this is going to the second round, so...
That's fantastic.
They play a tough team in Aponequit, so we wish them well, though. But, thank you. Any other questions for Owen? Thank you. Any members of the school committee have anything they'd like to bring up? Mr. Rupp?
Thank you. Through Mr. Chair, people may or may not know, but I teach in Rockland, who played Middleborough in the hockey game, and me, I'm very glad it was a good competitive game so I could give thumbs up to both sides. But the comments my students at Rockland made about Middleborough, there were two things. One was how much the team had improved, how they were playing better more as a team and faster, which I thought was kind of cool to hear, because they're in the same league, they had already played each other a couple of times. The second thing is something, part of the reason why I love Middleborough so much, is they said so many Middleborough kids came out for that game in support, and it's been really good to see all the fan buses and all the community supporting all the teams and all the athletes as they move on through the tournament. So just, I just want to reiterate that comment that other towns are noticing how spirited Middleborough kids are.
Add that that's been a theme for the year. You know, any time any of the kids have qualified for postseason play, there's been a fan bus and a huge... I was fortunate enough to watch the girls play with you and watch the girls play soccer, and there was a huge crowd. There was a whole section of the stands just with Middleborough kids, and they did themselves proud, and I know Owen was there yelling, we could hear him the whole time. So, yeah, they do a fantastic job. And, you know, and the other thing, too, I think that needs to be said, too, is the number of teachers who show up. You know, we have teachers all over the South Shore, and they'd love to come by and watch their kids play, and it's fun and exciting. Anyone else have anything to add?
And Mr. Chair, it's not just a theme for this year, it's a theme, it's a culture of the school, and it's a, that supportive group, that supportive, they support each other in everything they do, whether it be speech and theater workshop, or a musical or play, or something on the athletic fields, or even academia. And we have all sat down for the Advanced Placement Seminar each year and the Advanced Placement Workshop that we do in celebration, and it's just incredible. So, just, I just wanted to mention that it's not just this year, it's every year, so...
Other things that people want to mention?
I'm going to bring one up, and Mr. Chivononi, I'm going to rely on you. I believe Saturday night is Middleborough Friends as an event. Could you talk to us about that?
Middleborough Friends, we, once a year, we do an event. This year, it's the third year now, it's the Cabana Fever. It's the Get Out of the Cold Cabana Fever at the Elks, starting at 7:00 with the Baja Brothers. If you're familiar with the Baja Brothers, or even if you're not, they give a real good Caribbean theme to it. They usually go and spend a week down at Margaritaville down in Key West and perform. They're from Taunton, great group of guys that perform. Tickets are still available, they'll be available at the door. The remaining tickets for $20, and please come on down, it's a great event. We raise money each year, we give, we've given over $10,000 away, and we give $1,000 a year to a Middleborough student who is, Vic Sil, in the name of Vic Sylvia, who was a real staunch, he was really, he was very vehement about ALS and the ALS list, for the statewide list, and he's been recognized, God rest his soul, he was recognized for his work on that. So we try to get a student who's going into either biomedical research, or even environmental law, because that was really what Vic, what Vic and his family, they attend to, his wife, she's like 93 or 94, she's awesome. Really would like students to keep, keep working on, because we'll find cures for a lot of things, not just ALS, but I have a feeling when, when one of those pieces kind of gets, we discover one thing and they're just going to, all the dominoes are going to fall, and kind of dovetails into this biomedical program, biomedical program we have with Project Lead the Way now at the high school, that is, that's kicking right now, it's awesome. So I'm really proud of that, that program at the high school. But this event, Saturday night at the Elks, 7:00 to 11:00, come on down and just dancing and have a good time. It's $20 at the door, and like I said, we do $1,000 a year, and we even do, a lot of times we find upperclassmen that we try to, we look at everything, but we love looking at the upperclassmen, because usually you get your third year of college, and that's when nothing, you get nothing from the college, and those are the tough years. And when you're in biomedical, and I think the last person, I can't remember their names, I saw the transcript, because I give out the, I work on the scholarship committee, As and Bs in these high-end bio classes at Mass School of Pharmacy, not an easy curriculum. So the last thing you need to worry about is where that $52,000 is coming from next year, and if we can knock off $1,000, it's a good thing. So, thank you for mentioning it.
No problem, and we should also add that the weather looks to be a little snowy in the, in the morning. The afternoon should clear up for people to be able to go to the girls' basketball game in Aponequit, and that'll be over in plenty of time for anyone to attend the Middleborough Friends.
Coming, we give white shirts and shorts and flip-flops.
There you go, there you go.
And Mr. Chair, Vic Sylvia was very active in town politics for a number of years. He was also the owner and operator of Vic Sylvia's greenhouse out on Plymouth Street for many years, which is now, as you may know, it is Michelle's greenhouse. But he was more, more of a horticulturalist at heart and really developed some strands and so, and actually his son Roy, who I graduated high school with, is working part-time for the school system, so it's great that it's in his name, it's fantastic.
The other thing, if anyone knew Vic, I had many a conversation, a political conversation with Vic, and those always happened at the Dunkin' Donuts in the corner, and that's what he, you know, he loved his Dunkin' Donuts coffee and loved to talk politics with anybody, and...
A very respectful man.
Absolutely, he was a good guy. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up? Seeing no one, then I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Catino, how are you? Here are the next contestants.
So not a lot going on, I thought that the, our last negotiating session went very, very well. We seem to be picking up on how that's working, and it seems to be starting to roll forward, so...
We are learning.
Yes, but, you know, it's, it's a slightly different method, so, but I think things are starting to move forward nicely with that. The only thing that I'd like to do is just to remind parents that at the high school next Wednesday, we have parent-teacher conferences. So I'm going to put it out there, hopefully people will show up, because we're certainly eager to have all of our schedules filled, so I'm not sitting there twiddling my thumbs.
And the other thing is, if they, if for some reason that child didn't bring home the form, they can always email the teacher, right, Mr. Catino?
Absolutely, email the teacher, call, do something. Rarely are the teacher's schedules full, so if your student is saying that it's, that it's full, it's probably not.
And Mr. Chair, we have a great communication system, the Blackboard Connect, we'll be sending home emails to all the parents and encouraging them to get involved in this process, because it's, it's an opportunity that they should really take advantage of.
Spend some time with their teacher. Any questions for Mr. Catino? Richard?
Not strictly related, but I was wondering if there's any significance behind Darth Maul on your tie?
Uh, no, but actually, one of my students in my Block Four class today told me that my, my tie was scary. And I'm like, well, he is a villain in Star Wars, so I guess that kind of works, you What, what, what some of my students, they're, they look, they look at the tie and they go, oh, do you like Star Wars? And then they walk over towards my desk, and I have an entire shelf filled with Star Wars figures and all kinds of stuff, and they're like, oh, I guess you do. So, you know, my geek is out on display in my classroom, so, so anyway. Actually, I was thinking with, with the parent-teacher conferences, something that, that we had discussed, and something that I had been thinking about, the high school has, has over the last couple of years done this event where the students sign up and we, they have this, the 21st Century Learning Conference thing for the students. And it uses a particular scheduling thing, and I'm wondering if that application could be applied so that parents could actually sign up for parent-teacher conferences rather than having the students do it for them. It's just another, just another, just another thought, and, you know, it's like, because I, I mean, every teacher has advisory home rooms there, and I can, I can't tell you, the number, we print out the progress reports, and from mine, they're in the recycling bin before, it's before the kids even leave the room. You know, and, and that's, that's a problem. We have to figure out a different way to get in touch with the parents, and, you know, it's like, for the ones that are, that I need to see, I'm, I'm already getting together the emails to send out, and hopefully they'll, they'll come to see, you know? But for some of the other stuff, it's like, if the kids aren't doing the communication, then we need to try and figure something else out.
Right, absolutely.
I was just thinking of that, that one scheduling thing, because, because it worked, it worked great for the students to sign up for blocks, you know?
Yep.
So, wasn't sure if that was something we could...
And Mr. Chair, our media communications specialist, who's actually here at this meeting tonight, in the background running this meeting, is someone that ran that sort of 21st Century signup, so I'm sure we could sort of change the application to something like this.
And he did, he did do that, and it worked very well for the students to sign up for their, for their schedules. So it seems if we can do it in 30-minute blocks, we can do it in five-minute blocks, and have parents be able to just sign up themselves.
And for those that didn't, there was a secondary piece where, hey, you didn't sign up for something, so we'd encourage you to sign up.
Right, it was constant reminders of something.
It was required for students, but...
It really worked, it worked well, and might be something we could apply. Anyway, just, I was just thinking of that, so... Anything else?
You know, especially any way we can get parents more involved and more opportunities to see teachers and meet with teachers, that's going to help in the long run, as we both know.
Right. Any other questions for Mr. Catino? Mr. Catino, have a nice day, and thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
All right, I look forward to the budget hearing.
I will turn it over to the superintendent for the rather lengthy superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have a brief one this evening. First of all, in my report is the Department of Energy Resources is a group that we've signed on with in recent years, or the last year was really the first year. This is our Green Community Grant that we get from signing up to be a green community. Last year, we took advantage of the money, which, about $160,000 that came our way. That was the first year of the grant. The new second tier of grants is due March 22nd, and we potentially could get $250,000 as, as a, as a community, and we have about $200,000, $200,000 that's destined for our school system in that money. So looking forward to that successful, hopefully, application, and that is due the 22nd. We work closely with Andy Sukforth in the Town Manager's Office, and Seth Peckering, who's the Regional Manager of the D O E R, and Jim Hutchinson, and Seth Peckering does live in town.
Couple of questions. One is, we put, more a comment, we put a little money into that grant piece that we got, so we got 150 from, from the grant, and we put a little bit more, but we did the entire school, the Mayflower complex at once, did all the lights. So it was one inconvenience, it wasn't an inconvenience, but it was done. So that's a good thing. And we're, we're already seeing some, reap some benefits a little bit, probably, in electric bills, we've probably seen that just a little bit down, which is nice, because they say it's about a six, seven-year return rate, return on investment, which is awesome. What would you be considering in the next round of grants?
Well, we've spoken a great deal with Mr. Hutchinson on, or some other lighting projects within the district and some other things that will save us energy. They have to be energy-related, and then we have to be able to show, over the course of 10 years, a 20% reduction. Five years is the shortened window, but they usually extend to 10 if it's something that would take a lot of time. I think this, the HBB-MKG is showing benefits already, huge, in terms of the numbers that we're seeing. So we're looking forward to that, so...
And might we have to put a little money in with that, that grant this, this time?
It all depends on, on what the projects that we're looking at. We'd certainly be looking at possibly lighting at the MECC, and going to LED lighting, that's an immediate savings that we can realize.
And, and one of the things, absolutely, because one of the things that people may not realize is, that was redone in, what, 2000?
2007.
2007.
Yep.
And the technology of 2007 was mercury bulbs, all these compact fluorescents. Now it's all LED, and how, in 10 years, think, well, really about seven years, it really changed over, but it's, it's amazing that you think about changing them out, but even that changed, I've seen it in my own home, I've done the same thing, I've gone from incandescent to CFLs, CFL to LED, and the LED, I've actually seen the drop, especially at Christmas time. Everything's LED that I do, Christmas time, so it's, it's a miracle how much those LEDs will save over time quickly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's our plan, yeah. Are there any questions on Department of Energy Resources? If not, we'll move on to school choice. The information that you had requested at the last meeting in terms of numbers, you certainly have, I believe, two pages of them. One is currently what we have in terms of numbers. The second page is projected, given the number of students we have, and under what's called the State Put Clause, all those students would be retained, not retained grade-wise, but retained in the school system. We've had two additional requests for the high school for the 2019, 2020 year, but the, at the discretion of the school committee, would be how we look at these numbers. In the past, on April 27th of last year, or actually '17, we had approved 30, and then 30 Nichols, 30 at the high school, 30 at Nichols Middle School, 20 in the entire complex, HBB and MKG, and five at the MECC. So the numbers have been improved as such in the past, we did fill up the MECC last year with five. We have not filled the HBB-MKG at 20, and next year we're looking at 14, so we'd be six shy of that for, for next year. So if you see those numbers, you can be comfortable staying with the same numbers, you could be looking at some different numbers also. I would, I would say that the MECC numbers, we could probably put in five if we could fit them, and look at the registrations as they come in and make a decision based on that, certainly. But with the other numbers, the only one that's getting pretty close is the high school, which next year is projected to be 19, which would still need, which would still leave 11 spots available, so entirely up to the discretion of the committee if you want to kick it around for another couple of weeks and, and vote on it again. It's not due for a while, but it is something that would certainly be up for any discussion you might have, or recommendations that you might make, or action that you might take.
One of the reasons we put it... The superintendent, I put it up earlier, if people are inclined to vote on it tonight, and, and I'm fine with waiting or voting, is because it, it allows us more opportunity to see what comes in. And so, for example, like, we may talk about having five students at the MECC, okay? If we were to get six applications, then we could rethink that and have a conversation about that, and decide whether or not we were going to just keep the five, or we were going to add the six, how that would change, and we'd have a better idea as we progressed to look at where we were at numbers-wise, what came in. So that, that's the only, that's the only piece I raise about doing something like that tonight. So I know we talked about it, so I'm, I sort of open it up for dialogue first, if that makes sense, and then if people want to move on from there, we can, but, yeah.
The one thing I want to, I really, I want to see what we have coming into kindergarten. I'm really, I'm a little concerned, if we open to five, and if we have a big enrollment or a lot of people move to town with these new 100 homes that are being built currently, and we had a whole glut of students at the, the early childhood center, I'd hate to, you know, swamp classroom sizes, but, I mean, five doesn't seem like it's astronomical, but would three be better and wait to see what comes in and see if it goes up, and we could, we could up it like we did last year? We went to five, and if we had to go to six? And the thing is, the numbers is, is, we won't really have numbers until later than the spring on that one.
No, actually, we do have...
We have some numbers...
The birth, the birth numbers.
We have some numbers, because we already received from the town clerk's office, I sent the letter over, and we already received from the town's clerks what, what the current numbers are.
Those are projections of the number of students that they could potentially.
Right.
But we actually have physical registrations already that are in the, above 100, and looking for more. So we, we have online registration, the numbers will get, you know, we really don't have an idea, a total idea until August 25th or 26th, the first day of school.
First day of school.
So, but we try to get the, the biggest number as close as we can, and we try to do things, as you know, in the summer to get these families together, so there's more of an incentive to get people registered earlier.
Right.
And get people involved in the situation. We've also had conversations with Dr. Gates about coming up with a lottery system in case we need it. We haven't needed it at this point, up to this point, and we've been going along with sort of a rolling enrollment that we need to really sort of refine as a school system if we're going to continue with, with either expanding or keeping the numbers what they are. Because what if we had 15 students that say, oh, brand-new Middleborough High School coming up, we want to put our name in, and we only had 11 spots? Then we'd have to have a lottery at the high school.
I was, I was thinking that same thing at the middle school, it might happen, great, great problem to have, though.
Absolutely.
Students want to be here and be a participant.
Right, and we have students that are homeschooled, and we have a number of students that are homeschooled in the community. Dr. Gates is in the, in the background, I think it's up 62, 63, I believe, that are homeschooled in the community, and, and some of those folks may want to come to a newer high school, or, so, we'll see what happens with that.
I, I think the numbers we have now, Mr. Chair, are working right now. I just, my only concern would be the kindergarten, I just didn't want to have a situation where we had too many.
Certainly...
But if that's the case, if we had six, we could almost, I don't want to say we can afford another classroom, but we're almost getting to that point, it would take about 10 to have a new classroom, but...
Probably about 10 to afford a new faculty member.
Almost.
Yeah.
But I think, I think it would be worthwhile getting this out there and getting it available to people as soon as possible.
And that's part of what we put up earlier to have a conversation.
I think I'd keep the numbers for the, for, as we had last year, including the five at the middle school, and I'd make that a motion at this time.
What do you want to make for the same numbers as last year?
Same numbers as last year, which was, what, 30 at the high school?
At the high school, 30 at Nichols?
Yep, up to 30.
20 combined at the complex?
Yes.
And...
Up to five.
Up to five at the MECC, depending on registrations. To be determined at a later date by the school.
For purposes of discussion, where...
Second.
Second. Okay. One thing I would say, and the piece, the piece that concerns me the most in those numbers, and I think I want to raise that for the committee, is the high school numbers. 19 may not seem, like, 11 may seem like a good number, but we've, we've done pretty well with the high school numbers in the past, and my only concern is that I want to raise for the committee that I think we should revisit, is in the past, we have achieved the number, so 11 will get us to 30, if you will. I just want to make sure that, you know, we have situations in which kids go through things in the middle of the year. I know, for example, in one year with Paul, we, about five or six kids left because of, for example, divorce and moved to, you know, mom and dad split up and they had to move to a neighboring town, but it didn't make sense for them not to go to Middleborough, and so we reopened those numbers with a discussion with Paul, because it was really kids who were currently in the system applying. And so while I would agree with the 30, I think in some way we have, well, I would say I agree with the 30, Brian, but be flexible that if we hit over that number to look at kids who are currently in the system, to be able to move them around. And so that's, I just want to point that out ahead of time, because I think that, you know, and if Paul knows that, he knows he can come back to us, it isn't, it isn't a number that he has to ever tell a kid no to.
He used to send us letters saying, this person, you know, been a good person, been active in our community. The other thing is, I would really, do we, do we give preference, if we do hit a number, say, at the kindergarten, to families that have students already in our district?
Brothers and sisters automatically get preference if they have a child in the school system already. And I would also add, on our previous vote, we gave preference to staff members, children, too.
That was last year's vote, that we gave preference to faculty members if they wanted their children to come in school choice. They had, they had the first.
So any questions about essentially maintaining the numbers as they have been for the past year? Greg?
So you've mentioned adding five to the MECC, is that five additional to the five, or just five?
Keeping the five.
Keeping the five, okay. And that's your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we vote on this every year, so, like, this is something we can adjust, and we can adjust at mid-year if we have to, right?
Well, no, yes and no. I mean, you can...
You can't, you can't kick anyone out.
Well, so what happens is, I mean, in, in most of the cases, and I think the superintendent will attest to this, for kindergarten especially, I think that you will see by end of June that a number exists that we could take five students for kindergarten. But that doesn't mean we don't get a large number of applications over the summer that, and so we've already, we will have to have decided by June whether or not to take those students, and it could, you know, we could see more numbers, but it would come over the summertime. But this, this system doesn't allow for change in that way. We can't wait, we can't wait until August to allow people, we have to do it by June, because those people have to know going in next year, and there's other pieces, like all their records get transferred, and there's a process that they have to do. So I don't want, so we could change the number mid if we haven't reached it. So for example, with the, with the 30 in the high school, you could, if there were only those 19 kids that we know about, you could change the number to 20, because we don't have them in the system. I don't think, if you're going to put out five for a number for kindergarten, more than likely you're going to hit that number, as we have the past couple of times, right around the June time.
Well, I guess I was thinking more in terms of increasing if we had to.
Yeah, well, although, again, the, the problem lies in that, the, where you're going to increase really is the high school, because you're, like I said, you're running into kids who are leaving, who are, are kids leaving midstream for something and want to stay. You're not really going to find a whole lot of kid, people are going to make decisions for their kids by June, so you're not going to, for example, pick up somebody in, you don't see a lot of people looking to choice a district in September or October, it happens previous to that.
All right.
And that's been my experience in the past, having done this in two districts. Mr. Oakley?
I'm just trying to figure out how I would, how I would make this decision for myself anyways to vote, and, and it seems like it's solely based on what the, the projected population of the, the town is going to, or where these people that are moving into town, how old their kids are, and, and how, you know, what our class sizes are going to be. I mean, I guess the thing that I'm hearing, and we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, is that there is a big glut of people coming into town, a lot of building and stuff like that. So I guess I just need to know from you guys, these numbers that we're talking about, these 30, 30 and 20 for the complex and all that, are, are these things that would put us in a tough spot if we do have much higher enrollment, or we have plenty of cushion there to begin with?
Numbers like 100 would put us in a tough spot. Right now, these are, these are comfortable numbers that we can live with in terms of class size.
Got it, got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially if it's evened out, even if, let's say that the HBB-MKG has 20 approved, and currently there are fourteen scheduled, even though six kids, that's divided amongst two schools.
Right.
Ten, ten, really, grades one through five in one school, grades one through five in the other school. So, it would affect six classrooms, more than likely, six different classrooms, or really just adding one student, if we went to the twenty. That's just an example.
And, and I think I heard that if we were to get higher enrollment than we expected, that we, there would be a certain number at which we could just afford to pay another teacher? So, it's not like we wouldn't be able to house them, right?
Well, we could if we, we planned on it. There are, there are towns that, that opened this up to thirty or forty, knowing that they'll get the applications. There's a local community that went from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten, and this is how they funded it. They opened it up because they knew they had people in neighboring towns who were looking to go to a full-day K. Uh, they were able to afford it, and afford the extra teachers required by opening up the numbers in kindergarten. We're not in that position, we have full-day K, we want to keep our numbers lower in full-day K. But that's why we kept the number at five last year, because our numbers were such that we could do it. It also brings income into the district, there's no doubt about it.
Right.
And that helps fund a number of different things within the district, a number of different initiatives.
Okay.
In some respects, in a couple of respects, we filled positions, for example, at the high school, positions we weren't able to afford, like biology teacher who, who works with special needs students, and now a history teacher that works with special needs students. So, we were able to add those two positions previously through this money. And again, it benefits all our kids, not just, you know, the thirty individuals who.
Sure. And I do remember hearing from, from Mr. Lynch a couple of meetings ago, I think that the class sizes that we have now are very reasonable. Right, yep. Okay, thank you.
Greg?
I'm not sure if we have exact data on it, but more anecdotal through you, Mr. Chair, but Mr. Lynch, um, how's the retention been from kindergarten to the complex?
This is our first year of having kindergarten students in choice. So, when these students go to first grade.
Yeah.
We're, we have no indication that any of these students are going to go back to their host communities, or their, their neighborhood communities, their town communities, however, we don't know that.
Okay.
So, when these students go into first grade, they'll become, they're part of those fourteen
Okay.
Um, for next year, projected. And if they go back, then that number will go down from fourteen to thirteen to twelve, if they choose to. And we'll see, a part of the reason they came here was because of the full-day K, and where they came from, their communities, or their residential communities, are perhaps half-day, so. Uh, and we can actually put that data together when first grade bell rings next year, we'll be able to tell you whether those five people, and, and a couple of them are faculty member children, faculty members' children.
Five to, six years ago, we only used to do senior year only twelfth grade, that was it for school choice.
Five, five students.
Yeah, five students, that was it. No ifs, ands or buts about it, and I kept saying, why, why, why? And people were telling me all these reasons, and none of them made sense, and they don't make sense. But one of the things we did notice is, when we had a full-day K, we did have two or three students that would be in the full-day K program, living at grandma's house, and then they would leave. And that was, that was, what, six years ago? A lot, there weren't as many towns doing full-day K, and if you did, you had to pay for it. So, there was an option here that people were using, and we, we did, we knew it, because Kathy used to track that, she used to track that like a hawk. People would come in and then they would leave. But, I mean, this way here, now they can just be honest with us, and we can collect the fee that we collect.
A student, uh, this year, at forty-three students. That helps with the operational budget, certainly.
Five thousand dollars per student, unless the student has special needs, and then the state picks up the entire bill for the special needs partial.
Or it's a partial student, because at different times of the day, it's prorated and such, so.
You're not losing money with any, with a student with special needs, it doesn't work that way, that's not how the system works, they pay the entire bill for special needs.
And keeping in mind, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to the committee, that we do have a number of students who go out to other districts in school choice. That doesn't hurt our operational budget, that just, that gets taken out of the town budget. So, we're trying as best we can to sort of even those numbers out. And we're at the, we're very close to evening those numbers out at this point, which at one point, we weren't even close to doing that. So, by doing this, we're able to do that. At some point, that, that may become part of the equation down the road. Right now, um, it's an indirect cost, basically, associated with that, so, that's what we're looking at now.
The other thing, just so, as we progress, and I know we talk about the idea of what it's going to be like when the high school opens up and stuff like that, I, I would maintain to everybody here, from what Brian had just said earlier, and what Greg said, which is, no matter what, we're going to still need the option of choice at the high school. And the reason is, again, for those kids who, you know, if you think about it this way, if a, if a kid's parents get divorced their senior year, right now, there's no requirement for us to have to keep those kids in their, their senior year, that requirement's gone. And so, that doesn't make any sense to me, that a child would, like, lose their senior year someplace else because of something that happened to the family. And so, I would always want there to be some room, especially in the choice component of the high school, that those kids can, where they've been the entire time. You know, the other thing is, we do that across the board in sports, throughout, you know, the time I've been here, which is, as soon as a kid hits high school, if they generally played in a, in a league, in, you know, our division, they stay in that league, no matter what happens with their family life, and they move, because they played with the same kids growing up, and a lot of them want to play with their friends in high school. And so, those people have always allowed it that way, and so, you know, this is just another example of that in my mind.
And, Mr. Chair, you used the example of divorce, but more often than not, we've found that it's parents who may be selling their primary home and moving to a neighboring community that their child really wants to stay at our school, at our high school. And, uh, it's been, it's been worked very well for us. Excuse me.
Any other questions or comments? So, the motion on the table is essentially to retain the numbers that were there last year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Yes.
I would move if we give preference to our fa, our faculty, staff, members, if they're, want their children in our district.
Go ahead, second.
Up, up to five. It's up to five.
Up to five kindergarten, correct?
In kindergarten, up, in kindergarten's up to five, yeah.
Well, uh, well.
I'm sorry, I'm, not, this, that was something else.
Up to five.
Yeah, up to five was a part of the motion.
Okay, thank you. I became very confused.
Just going back to the original motion, like we had said, thirty, thirty, twenty, and then up to five.
Up to five, yep.
Depending on registration numbers.
Yep.
To be determined in June, early June.
The motion on the table is to give preference to staff for choice. Any further comment?
Do you want to include the siblings?
The sibling, the siblings are a requirement of choice, so we don't have to include that piece, it's, it's just. It's just by statute. Okay. So, that's the piece that we have to adhere to. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Are you all set, sir? Okay. Then if no one objects, I am going to, uh, put this regular school committee session, uh, on hiatus for a minute, and I'm going to open at seven-thirty the public hearing on budget. Just so everyone knows, there are two requirements of us for the budget hearing. The first is that we post it in a local newspaper with, and we did that. And the second requirement is that a budget be available at the superintendent's office for the past two days, and that budget was available at the superintendent's office for the past two days, for anyone to review. So, with that, I will turn the budget hearing over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I will, in turn, turn it over to our new business, Director of Business and Finance, Ms. Sarah Hickey. It's her first budget presentation for the district, we welcome her, and, uh, she's been preparing and ready to go.
Thank you. So, first I want to say, the budget process was different this year. We tried to look at the budget through the lens of the district versus individual schools and departments. We had staffing discussions at the leadership team meetings in January, and talked about the big picture of the budget with the leadership team. Our original number that was brought to budget subcommittee was much higher, and through the process of working with the budget subcommittee, our total budget amount was brought down to balance with, and be in alignment with the town budget. And this is an outline of what you're going to see tonight. I'm going to start with a people, a per pupil expenditure comparison, I'll talk about the budget drivers, and then the majority of my presentation is going to be talking about three different ways of looking at the budget. We're going to look at it by cost center, by category, and then by salaries and expenses. We'll finish up with a summary of the total costs from all the sources of funds, and then there will be a recommended motion at the end. So, this first slide, you'll see, it says twenty-seventeen per pupil expenditure comparisons. This data comes from the Department of Education, and if you think about how the money works with the Department of Education, the end-of-year report for twenty-eighteen was submitted by each school district in September, and the Department of Education is still, uh, I'm sorry, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they're still in the process of going through all of the fiscal year twenty-eighteen end-of-year reports, so that's not official data with them yet. So, this is the twenty-seventeen data, which is the most recent data available. So, you can see in this chart, I put in, um, on the left-hand side in purple, that's the state average per pupil expenditure. Middleborough is in orange in the middle, and there's a selection of other school districts there. The school districts that have the stars next to them, those are what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education calls our DART districts. DART, D-A-R-T, stands for District Analysis and Review Tools. So, the Department of Education has quite a bit of data, and they make some of that data available, and they put a list of comparable organizations to each individual school district, and they base these comparable organizations on similar demographics, similar assessment data, similar student support data, educator data, financial data, and achievement gap data. So, what I put on this graph is some local communities, I thought you'd like to see what's happening around Middleborough, and then, again, there's the, the districts, Northbridge and Quabin and Bourne and Plymouth, those are districts that the state considers to be comparable to us. For the presentation tonight, a lot of the material, a lot of the slides, it's dense material, and I thought it would be better if, instead of going through the whole presentation and then going back to questions, I thought it would be better to take questions as we went. So, is there any, any questions on our, where we are for per pupil expenditure? The state average is fifteen thousand nine hundred eleven dollars. Middleborough is a little bit below that, at fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars, but, um, the graph shows you where we are in comparison to neighboring communities and similar communities. So, questions on this?
I was just wondering, the, the communities that you had asterisks that were like comps, I guess, right?
Yes.
It looks like there's six of them, and five are above us and one is below. Is, are the comps that we have access to, is that the complete list of?
There are ten in all. For example, Northampton is one of our, so, some of the comparable districts really are, you know, Northampton's very, on the other side of the state. You can't get much farther away from us than, than there, so it's hard to sometimes think about that as being one of our comparable districts. So, um, I, I didn't, to be honest with you, I had ten districts that were comp districts, and another group of districts that were around us, and it made the bar graph too big to be meaningful to look at.
Oh, sure, no, I, I, no criticism, please. The only thing I was curious about was, is this kind of the trend that, that most of our comps are above us in per pupil expense?
Rich, the biggest thing I know, I want to say about that is, if you look at, if you look at the end, look at primarily Plymouth and Falmouth, okay? I, I understand they're above us, but for example, I know Falmouth very, very well, my wife teaches in Falmouth. Falmouth has more schools than we do, so therefore, they have more staff than we do, and they have more kids than we do. So, if you have more schools and more staff, your expenses are going to be more. Um, and I would say the same thing with Plymouth. You know, tho, those are two areas that I don't, I get why they might be considered comps to us, but at the same token, you know, comps are just based on geographic areas and a wide variety of things. You're not necessarily looking apples to apples. And so, when you see some of the areas that are higher than us, you know, there are reasons. Again, Plymouth has a lot more schools than we do, a lot more staff than we do, so they're going to be higher than we are on the expense average.
These, these districts have been chosen year over year, and the reason why is, the asterisk ones are the ones that compare to us, that the state looks at us and says, these are your comparable ones, straight up. The other ones, you'll notice, are all the surrounding towns, pretty close to us, or not exactly surrounding, but that's why they were chosen, so when people say, well, Bridgewater, Rainham spends this, so that, it really gave us a real look at, or carve, or whoever, that's why those were chosen. And sometimes, we fall in the middle, sometimes we're over one, sometimes we're over the other, depends on how it adjusts out. But that's how those were chosen, just going back almost since I've been on the board. And it was really kind of a good, the way it looks is, there are these other districts that are spending more that are comparable to us, granted, like, there are reasons. But even Northbridge, they're, they're, they're spending a little less than us, per pupil. But it also goes in, that's average pupil expense across the board. You, you could get into look, you could start looking at what we're spending on other resources for special education, et cetera, that all kind of gets averaged, so, but that's how those were all chosen way back when, and we use them, and it's nice because we see it year over year.
Well, you know, and again, the other piece that, you know, you look at somebody like West Bridgewater in comparison to us, I mean, I'll tell you right now that West Bridgewater doesn't have the bus routes that we have. You know, so, where our, our expenses are going to be much higher, for example, in transportation, than it would be for West Bridgewater or East Bridgewater, for that matter. So, therefore, we're going to be higher just on that alone. So, you know, those things pick up. We've always asked for, and again, Sarah, thank you for including the areas around us, because in a lot of ways, you know, in my mind, those are more a comp than what the state aligns us up with for a comp. I, you know, I would, I wouldn't say we're comparable to Plymouth and Falmouth. You know, it's just, just number-wise, it's not the same, and, and school-wise, and it's, it's just not the same. I get why they do.
Our percentages of low-income students might be the same or similar, or our percentages of diverse, diverse populations might be the same. So, um, sometimes that's what puts them in the, the ten schools that we're compared to.
Other questions on this slide? Rich?
This might not be an answerable question today, but I was just curious, how do you guys process this, when you look at it? Is there a way to compare this per pupil expense to something like MCAS scores or something, and to figure out bang for buck, how we're doing versus the other communities?
So, I, that's where I think, this DART tool, and this is accessible to you on the Department of Education, the Elementary and Secondary Education website. It's one of the tabs under District Profiles, and you can go in there, and you can select Middleborough, and it will, up will pop the comparable schools, and then you can go through and click and say, where's our achievement data? Or where's our, um, our population, our demographic data, or our teacher percentages? There's all sorts of information, our financial data. So, you can go in there and look at that, and that's available to anybody, it's just part of the information the Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, I'm going to call them DESI for the rest of the night. It's part of the information that they just make available to anybody. So, um, there's, so, your original question was, what do we, how do we look at this data? There's really more to look at than you can really ever process all in one sitting. So, sometimes it's, I want to look at per pupil expenditures, and then I want to look at assessment data, or number of teachers certified in the content area they're teaching, or, you know, there's a lot of information. It's, if you're a data nerd, such as myself, it's fun. So, when we began the budget process, there are budget drivers that we take into consideration. So, the Middleborough Public Schools are committed to creating, supporting, and sustaining cultures of innovation and achievement, excellence, and well-being, and that's something that's taken into consideration throughout the budget process. That comes from the Middleborough Public School Strategy for Continuous District Improvement. Also, when we begin working on the budget, the, um, the DESI has requirements of us, and all of those have to be taken into consideration. And all of those have to be taken into consideration. We also need to consider teaching, learning, and assessment. That's what we do every day in the district. There are fixed costs and contractual increases that have to be taken into consideration at all points. Transportation for the students and special education and tuition services. So this list are really the big things that you have to keep in the forefront of your mind at all times when working on the budget. But pretty much in the forefront of my mind all the time while I'm working for Middleborough. So this next slide is really an overview of the bulk of what I'm going to be talking about tonight. So I have three different circle graphs here. And our proposed operating budget for FY '20, or fiscal year '20, is $32,444,643. And I have, in this presentation, divided that money up three different ways for us to look at and to think about. The first way we're going to look at it is by the Individual Cost Center. The second way we're going to look at it is by the state's chart of accounts that they use. And the third way we'll look at it is by examining salaries and expenses. So this graph is the, the $32 million broken up by cost center. And I'm going to start up, for each one of these circle graphs, I'm going to start up at, at 12 o'clock. So district administration, 7% of that $32 million. District administration is exactly what you think it is. It's the salaries and expenses of running the district. I'm sorry, 2%? Did I say 9? Oh. I, working with this PowerPoint, I tried to make it so that that 2% would move out of the circle and be easier to see. And I, after trying to move it 30 or 40 times, I gave up on it. It is 2%. The, going to the right, going clockwise around the circle graph, PPS stands for Pupil and Personnel Services. That is our salaries, our pupil personnel staff. That's the salaries for occupational therapists and physical therapists. That's our salaries for summer inclusion, the summer inclusion program. That also includes professional development and conferences, instructional equipment, testing and supplies, psychological services, and health services for the students of Middleborough. Continuing around the clock, athletics. You'll see that athletics, it says, less than 1%. The, that, that cost center for athletics is just the salaries of the athletic director and the trainer. The buses for athletics, coaches, stipends, those come out of the individual schools. And then everything else for athletics comes out of the user fees, which go into a revolving account. So it looks like athletics is next to nothing. In the big picture, it sort of is. But there is considerably more spent on athletics than is representative there. Technology. You can see that technology, that blue piece of the pie is 2%. And that 2% is just representative of district-wide salaries and district-wide technology. Built into each of the other departments, each of the other schools, are technology purchases. So for example, in Middleborough High School, which is 25% of the pie, includes the cost for device leases for the class of 2023. And all of the school's budgets include software subscriptions and curriculum materials, techno- technological materials, and additional devices or repairs to technology. The Middleborough, so I thought the, the ones with the logos, Middleborough High School and Nichols Middle School, the Berkland School, Mary Kay Good School and MECC, I thought that was, those are pretty explanatory. Those are what you think about what we spend money on in each of those buildings, salaries, expenses. Undistributed, which is the purple piece of the pie. Undistributed includes things like salaries for the school-wide courier, the curriculum director, the maintenance staff. In that is a vehicle purchase for special ed transportation, so a minivan. That undistributed also includes our ELL program, the English Language Learner Program, the salaries, professional development, instructional materials for that program. It also includes the school safety officers, which are paid at an hourly detail rate, police officers that go to the schools on a daily basis. And that also includes our vocational tuitions and the agricultural school tuitions for our students. So are there questions about this slide?
I was just wondering if there was any way to, to know what the, the, almost like the per pupil cost for each of the schools is? Because I, you know, having the breakdown of how much we spend per school, I, I'm just looking for like a little bit more on like, how, how much we spend per student. And this is something I could just do offline. But is it safe to say that maybe the MECC has maybe the higher cost per student out of the, the schools up there?
Off the top of my head, I don't, so.
At the elementary school, you'll have a smaller classroom size at about 20. And you're going to have an ESP assigned to that classroom. So you have a teacher and a half at that classroom versus the other schools that may not have that, not including one-to-one assigned ESPs for students that have it part of their IP, et cetera. So that's why you might see a little bit of an increase at that location. Plus, it's a single grade, so you lose economy of scale where you'd have, you have a preschool, yeah, plus preschool. But you lose that economy of scale of like, four grades or five grades in a big building versus one. And that's why we have like a one and a half custodial service there. Because you really can't put two full ones. It, it just gets too expensive to, that's why you'd see that 9%. I've done that too. But if you take the 9% in the enrollment for both of them and then you take it down to budget, it'll come out with a number. It does come out, yeah. I didn't have it with me. I actually was playing with those numbers when I saw this.
So if you want to know those exact numbers, we don't have those with us, obviously. But if you took 25% of the $32,444,000 and you took the number of students that are currently at the high school, and then you took that number, 25% of the 3244, divided it by the number of students, you'd get the, the general, the, how much we spend on each kid at the high school.
Got it.
So, and then do that around the, around the wheel. But we don't have that information with us this evening.
Yeah, no, no problem. Thank you.
Further questions on this? So the next way we're going to look at that $32 million is by, expenses by category. So the Department of Education gives us the chart of accounts, the financial accounting. And the chart of accounts is divided up into what they call the 1,000s, the 2,000s. And what I wanted to do was walk us through each of those things. So the 1,000s, that, again, starting at the top of the circle graph, that orange piece, that's what the DESI chart of accounts, that's the 1,000s, which they call Administration. So that's the cost for school committee, the superintendent's office, the business office. That includes the student information system and any legal services we have. The bigger pick, the bigger piece of the pie, as we would expect, it's a school district, so the bigger piece of the pie is the 2,000s, which is instruction. That includes salaries for teachers and paraprofessionals and subs, money for substitutes, professional development, textbooks and equipment, supplies, and instructional technology. The 3,000s, these are the student services. So that's the health services, the nurses, student activities, athletics, and security. The 4,000s are custodial and maintenance. And that includes utilities. And utilities also, not just heat and electricity, that's also computer networking, telephone, as well as electric, gas, water, sewer, and trash. That has the, contains the maintenance and custodial salaries, custodial supplies and equipment, and the maintenance supplies and equipment. And I, as well as technology infrastructure. The Department of Education has the 5,000 accounts. And that's a very small number there. That is sick leave buyback. So it, if, if you can see from here, it says it's less than 1% in comparison to all the money that's spent everywhere else. The sick leave buyback goes to retiring teachers. So there's not a lot of money there. And the 7,000 accounts, that is for equipment and vehicle replacement. So we're looking to purchase a minivan, a special ed minivan for transport, our special ed transportation. And that's that little piece of the pie there. The 9,000 accounts, those are the tuition accounts. So that is the Norfolk Agricultural Tuition, the Bristol Agricultural Tuition. And that also contains our out-of-district special, special education tuitions. Questions about this slide? Yes?
Be in part of that? No, that's something else? That's by the town, okay.
Other questions? So I included in here a comparison. So this is that same information, the, the numbers from behind the pie graph you just saw over on the left-hand side. Those are the account, the 1,000s, 2,000s, 3,000s, and so on. The description of what it is. And then there is the appropriation for fiscal year 2018, 2019, proposed for 2020, as well as the difference between FY '20 and FY '19. I also included on this slide, transportation. I'll talk about that again in a little bit. But the transportation budget is paid for by the town. And I'll have detailed numbers for that included tonight. Questions on any of these numbers?
Was there, without, I guess without just grabbing a quick percent, was there anything that went up by a significant percent more than, than maybe was expected? Or, I mean, I see there's like some big numbers here, 684,000, but obviously that's out of a pot of 25 million. But I guess was there anything surprising in here or purposeful, like purposefully larger?
Purposefully larger, yes. So that $684,000 increase. Utilities had been, been level funded for about 10 years. So I did put in an increase for electricity and gas, you know, and heat and such because it, it was due. So that's one of the reasons why that went up. The other reason why that went up, the, the instruction line there, which wasn't surprising, is that the contractual services for technology infrastructure, we tried to do a better job of forecasting the technology needs this year. And so the number, the number there, the increase there is because we're actually look, looking at the numbers for increases in subscriptions to our student information system, for example. And using a projected number instead of just saying, well, it's going to be the same as last year. Anything else on? So the last way we're going to look at the $32 million is by dividing it up into salaries and expenses. Because that's ultimately what my office does all day is we had the money set aside from last year and it gets spent. And these are the two ways it gets spent, salaries and expenses. So as you would expect, the large piece of the pie here, 85% of the pie, is salaries. And then the expenses get divided up into contractual services. That's the green piece of the pie at 4%. Contractual services are payments for services rendered by personnel who aren't on payroll or somebody who's not regular employees. That also would include things like our contracts for maybe.
OTBT?
Yes.
Therapy if we don't have someone on staff or beyond that, that we have to bring additional staffing in?
The next way we look at expenses is supplies and materials. And those are materials and items that are expendable in nature and consumed. So that's like our copy paper. And we, in the classroom, we call them consumables, things that we're going to purchase, math workbooks for kids that each kid gets a workbook every year. And at the end of the year, it's been used up. The supplies, oh, and then other expenses is 2%. That's that blue portion there. And the other expenses, I did break out for this, utilities. The utilities are 3%. So other, other expenses really include utilities. But I thought it was important to see that that is a big piece of what we do is pay for electricity and pay for heat. And then the last piece of the pie is tuitions. And again, that's the Bristol Aggie, Norfolk Aggie, and our out-of-district special ed tuitions. So questions about this slide?
Quick comment on that slide? The comment that I have on that slide is that 92% of our budget is, is pretty much salary. Just as an observation. Between the salaries, the contract services, and the tuition going out, it's pretty much paying for salaries, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, for anyone to ever say, well, you didn't do this, you didn't do that, there's a lot, pretty much, we're fixed on, on 92% of what we're doing. We really only have a little bit of play with in the middle. So it's, it's not a, it's not an easy thing to do with 8%. Sorry. That's an observation that I make with numbers. Thank you.
So this next slide is just the numbers for that. So the, the numbers for that circle graph that you looked at. And again, you can see the, the salaries and the contractual services. That's that approximately 90% that Mr. Giavononi was talking about. Questions?
I was just wondering, in, in that list, you know, salaries, services, supplies, all that, for like technology purchase and upgrade, would that be in like the other expenses category in this, in this pie here? Do you know?
It, it would come in as other expenses, yes.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
So this is the transportation budget that is funded by the town. I submitted this to Town Manager, Mr. Nunes, back in January. So this outlines all of the transportation that we do. We have the first stu-, we have a contract with the first student bus. We contract for vocational schools. We hire and run mini buses. So we have salaries and expenses for mini buses. There are crossing guards that we pay. There are contractual services for some special ed transportation. There are some students that we just can't transport. There's $120,000 that says McKinney-Vento homelessness. McKinney-Vento is the law that governs homelessness that says that if a student is, a student of Middleborough Public Schools and they become homeless, we still educate them here and transport them here from wherever they are. And then foster care, $60,000. So if we look at these numbers, and I apologize, I didn't put this on the sheet, but the, the first So if we look at these numbers, and I apologize, I didn't put this on the sheet, but the First Student, that number there is approximately $37,000 increase over the past year. The vocational schools was level funded, the mini bus salaries and the mini bus expenses increased by about $26,000 total. The crossing guards, I level funded. The special ed contracted services is, is a difficult one because sometime, you know, the population fluctuates and it's hard to predict. And I did add $25,000 into that line of the budget this year, simply because this year we're close to, we've spent $84,000 already out of the $50,000 that was set aside for that. So I upped that number. And then the McKinney-Vento line, I level funded, but foster care, I increased to $60,000 from $50,000 because that's also a place where we've seen significant increase.
First off, on the McKinney-Vento, when that was first put through and was voted to be taken on, because we had a vote to accept McKinney-Vento, we did not willingly accept McKinney-Vento. What that means is it's actually truly an unfunded mandate, the state forced us on it. We do it, we've never been reimbursed, and we should be reimbursed because we did not willingly accept it under Proposition 2 and 1/2, that was passed in 1981. You have to willingly accept it or else the state has to pay for it. So when we voted, it was never done willingly, and the record shows it in our minutes that day. The foster care bill, once again, and it's one of my biggest arguments I've had with our current governor, my comment to him back in August was, when are you going to pay your bill? I asked him in April, I asked the lieutenant governor, when are you going to pay your bill? We're incurring substantial costs here that should not be borne onto the district. Our entire increase from the state's $17 million, 17.8 million, was $61,000. We've eaten it all up into foster care, transportation. We do it, we're not going to not do it, but the idea is they should be, and I am trying my hardest, and I'm trying to talk to everyone I know to get them to actually pony up the dough. The problem is, is they just don't have it. They have it for everything else, but they don't have it for this. But I get on that box every year because it really annoys me that 180,000, that's three teachers, that's five ESPs, I mean, so many different things I could do with that. That's a computer, the high school, for every student in the high school on lease. I mean, just, I look at it so many ways, but I find that interesting. The McKinney-Vento bill has been one that's been really tough because when they used to put families in the hotels, we would bus the students back to their district, which is the requirement, and then we'd have to get half of it back from the other district. And it was always a, you're chasing, you're chasing your tail, and sometimes you had to use contract services. It was just a dart moving constantly for the ladies in the office that run this thing, or the gentleman who runs it now. It was always a problem trying to see who could get in the bus and get somebody somewhere because a placement occurred like that overnight. So this is a tough one. I don't wish that on anyone, but I thank you for putting it together, and I'm glad we have the money there, because I know it's always scraping money together to fill those numbers.
Well, that is, that, that, those monies I proposed and the Town Manager approved, so we thank him for that.
A couple of things. One is, I'm going to fundamentally disagree with you on the state doesn't have the money. When you have over a billion dollars in a rainy day fund, you have the money. I want to also point out that Dr. Gates has sort of handled the homeless piece and the foster care for us, and done a really great job in monitoring that and making sure that our needs are addressed and met. And so she has been a fantastic resource for that, and I met with her a couple of times over those pieces, so I do want to thank her for that. You know, as I've had a conversation with Dr. Gates and with the superintendent, I meet generally monthly with the DCF Commissioner, and this is one of the things I always bring up to her. And, you know, I get where she's at, you know, this is not some, this was thrust upon her by the legislature, it was not, it is not a DCF piece that was, they did, it's a piece that the legislature changed to how it was going to fundamentally be done. I would also add to people when looking at transportation budget, you know, we're a district that doesn't charge for transportation, you know, and this is, if you look at the districts around us, lots of districts charge for transportation, I believe. We have to cover the first mile within, outside a mile or mile and a half, depending on what the grade, if I remember correctly. Right. So, I mean, it's still, it's still a, there's a significant portion of kids who get bused that we could say no to, but we don't. And we really want to make sure the kids get transported to school because by helping them get to school, that's how they go through the day.
Mr. Chair, the level of frustration with the unfunded mandate goes even further, to the point where we are relegated really to transport these children from other communities. And I understand the principle of the law and everything behind it. However, and I know that Dr. Gates will probably share at some point, but the frustration with finding transportation, because there are so many students in the state that's allowed now, there's so, there's only so many companies that provide contracted services to provide transportation for these students, where we have people just saying, no, we don't have the vans, no, we don't have the vans, no, we don't have the vans. So I know that she shares with me the level of frustration associated with that, and that's just an extension of this unfunded mandate, that we have to pay it, but there's nobody to pay it to. So there's just that level of, so, just an additional piece there.
Quick question about the change in budget for transportation. Well, first of all, I think, I think this was a town, town borne expense, right? So it doesn't come out of the schools' budget? I was just wondering, I'm trying to understand the change. I know that some of the increased budget comes from things that we can't control at all, like, like students that come into town that needs certain transportations, but it looks like 4.6% increase from 18 to 19, and then 19 to 20 is like a 2.6-ish. And I was just wondering, is most of the change year over year because of increasing cost of services, or is most of the change because of new students that come in that need certain things?
Or is most of the cost increase in the transportation contract with the bus company and their, you know, they, so we're in the second year of a three-year contract with an option for a fourth and a fifth year, and when the bus company set up, the First Student Bus Company set up the contract, nobody goes into it and says, I want to go out of business. And so they take a wild guess at what they think gas is going to cost. And then in the first year of the contract, they've overestimated the amount for gas and we get a refund.
Got it.
And then in the second year of the contract, which we're in now, they've done a better job forecasting, and we've set aside, or Kathy Pietelli set aside $10,000 for overages in gas, and then next year, you're going to see a significant increase.
Got it.
Because gas has gone up. Did that, did that cover that question?
Yes. Thank you.
First year of the contract, there was a sizable jump because the bus company had to adhere to state law on family leave, and they had a bigger cost increase that they had, they bore to us for that first year, and then moved it on from then.
And they told us they were doing...
Yeah, we, we had, we hired an outside consultant to do our bus company contract, and that was going to happen anywhere we went. And so we understood that going in.
Got it.
I mean, one of the, I will say this, and I think we've seen it based on other places, one of the great pieces of First Student, is First Student is a nationally recognized transportation company. And if you think about where our kids go and where they travel to for a variety of things, First Student has other buses across the state and all around New England. And if a bus breaks down, you're not waiting for a bus to come from a local port to go back and get them. They can call a bus from an area around them and pick kids up, so, and we've seen that in the past.
It has happened, Mr. Chair, we had it.
We had students coming back from Roger Williams Park.
Spring 2015 before I came on board, but that was one of the issues when I came on board, that was a hot topic on the school committee. Because it was a bus that broke down on Route 95 going north in Attleboro, and fortunately, there were buses right there in Providence, where First Student has its, one of its major hubs, and they were able to get there a lot quicker than sending a bus from Middleborough all the way over. So it was an advantage to having that First Student sort of network, where some of the local networks don't have that.
We had a dead battery in Norwell. It happens. I mean, and there is, they have the place in Pembroke, they have the, they can pretty much grab a bus anywhere around the region.
Yeah. But you were right in your number, Mr. Oakley, the number is 2.72% increase in the transportation piece. We could have asked for more, but that was basically an educated decision, educated judgment on what we had in terms of contractual services for this year. So, that's a 2.72.
So part of this, putting together the transportation budget, putting together the school district budget, is almost the complex mathematical modeling, and a little bit of crystal ball, and crossing fingers. So...
Thanks for your review. To get us there.
That everyone should know about too, prior to going off this slide, is if you think about it this way, when we're building the new high school, we do house some of our buses at the high school. Their, First Student is allowing us to house them at their lot.
The big bus.
The big bus. So that, you know, that saves us out where we're going to put a bus for time being, and that helps us out when we're building, and so it doesn't take up space, which we know is going to be tight when we're building the new high school. So I just did want to say that about First Student also.
Because where those buses were parked in the high school lot, in the staff lot, that's going to become a sort of a highway for trucks coming in to the site where they're building the new high school. So that area's going to be completely out of, out of, out of touch, I guess, for us. So...
So then this next slide is the summary of total costs from all sources of funds. So that first number you see there, the $32.4 million, that's the number that I had given you, that the Town Manager has set aside for the school department, and I gave you the three different circle graphs dividing that up. The second number is the transportation budget that the town has agreed to for us. And then we anticipate $880,128 in circuit breaker, special ed reimbursement from the state, and then an additional $300,000 of costs for the district will come out of revolving accounts and from grant funding. So we had $1.5 million in grants this year. Some of the money in grants paid for materials for students, some of the grant paid salaries for faculty and staff. So I'll be continuing doing that, I just don't know the amounts that are coming in for grants at this time. So, questions on this slide? Okay.
So just an overall picture, if you will. I mentioned the 2.72% on the transportation. The over, the operating budget is a 3.34% increase, and the overall is a 3.29. So that's what we're looking at. If you've read the paper this week, you have West Bridgewater, they're asking for 5.85 or 5.86, and Silver Lake, the story last night was they're, they're sort of begging for three, and there's some other places that may be asking for more. We work within the parameters that the town gives us, a balanced budget parameter, and these are the numbers that we have been asked to live with as a school system. And for some, it's maybe not as much as some school systems are going to get regionally, but it's probably more than others. So that's, that's where we stand with, with the money of, in general, the big picture, so.
So this, this presentation is the best that I could do for you at this moment in time. We do have six contracts that are being negotiated, so there will be some change, there will be retirements that come in, so there will be some change. Again, we don't know the grant numbers, those don't come in until the summertime. If funds become available, the leadership team has discussed and prioritized positions if, so again, as I said, if funds become available, preschool slash kindergarten, special needs teacher at the MECC, and then if additional funding is, is above that, then a position for the Lynx program at the high school, and then the third one, if money becomes available, would be a position for the Ames program at the high school. And that was what the leadership team discussed, and that's the prioritized list. Those are not currently in the budget at this time.
And then the next slide is recommendations, but I do want to go over a couple of things with everybody. First and foremost is this, tonight is really about a number to go to town meeting at. And just so everyone knows, what it's about is, the first and fundamental question is, can we live within the amount of money that the town, that the Town Manager has asked us to live within, or do we have to go above that? And I believe it's the, it's a recommendation of the subcommittee that we would recommend that we live within the town budget. The second piece is, as Sarah said, the budget really doesn't get formalized until June. And the reason it doesn't get formalized till June is we look at everything else that comes in, and we have to reassess. And so we are duty bound to have a balanced budget by July 1st. So if, for example, we know additional special ed students move into the community, or there are additional special ed placements that we find out about afterwards, we have to adjust those, and we have to make adjustments, and we have to figure out if we can fund it in a way we can fund it, or we have to look for outside pieces. But it's in, you know, it's our responsibility to have a balanced budget by July 1st. So as I've done in the past, which is, this is about a number tonight for town meeting, and then we're going to look again in June and make sure we're on track for where we are. Brian, you have a question?
Mr. Chair, first, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Stevens and yourself for being the budget subcommittee and going through all this stuff, because although it's just a number, it's not just, it is a full budget. I mean, we can live there. I was going line item by line, I've been looking at it, and I was like, wow, you know, you're, the way you've massaged it enough, it's great. Thank you, Mrs. Hickey, Mr. Lynch, the whole administrative staff for taking all the time in all those meetings to come up with this number. I think it's, I love the fact that we're living within the town's means, is the way I look at it. Since Charlie Cristello finally, we all got together, and the school committee, and Charlie, the Town Manager at the time, and Bob Nunes has continued with that, the Town Manager currently, with, we work together, we don't go into town meeting trying to unbalance a budget. We don't, you know, because that used to happen, we'd fight for days on a budget because of that, and not just the school budget, but other budgets too, over a $300 chainsaw. But I'm very happy that you guys worked hard on this budget. Sarah came in, I love it, you've come up with the numbers, you've broken it down, I really appreciate the hard work that you guys have done on this, and I'd like to make a motion now?
If you don't mind, what I'd like to do is see if anyone has any additional questions, and I'm going to ask if anyone in the audience has any questions. So, does anyone else have any additional questions before we go into recommendations? Seeing that, does anyone in the audience have any questions that they want to ask? Again, seeing that, and then I'll turn back to you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that the Middlebar School Committee approved $35,614,577 as the fiscal 2020 local education budget. Such appropriation includes $32,444,643 operating budget and $3,169,934 transportation budget, and further that the total appropriation of $35,614,057 is in compliance with the Education Reforms Act of 1993, and recommended by the school, Superintendent of Schools, and I further move that the school committee direct the superintendent to allocate the following additional fund sources, which total $1,180,128, including fiscal year 20, estimated circuit breaker, special education reimbursement of $880,128, and revolving account and grant funding totaling $300,000. The final approved expenditures for the schools will be $36,749,94,705.
Mr. Chair, have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Again, thank you for walking through, and Sarah, thank you very much. This was Sarah's first time with this, so not only did she have to deal with administration and Mr. Lynch, but she had to deal with Greg and myself. And so I really thank you. She always answered whatever questions we had and was able to make changes that we needed and look at things in different ways and how we pointed out, and so she made things a lot easier, and I would thank her for that, so, I do want to say, yes?
I want to, I want to give a special thanks to the town of Middleborough for stepping up this year. Once again, the state, the state portion of our budget of that $36 million happens to be $17,950,000 thereabouts, which represents a 0.3% increase in that, in that line item, which is $61,000. That, that's it. I mean, we have contractual increases of 2% on salaries, which is 85% of our budget, which we already looked at tonight. percent of our budget, which we already looked at tonight from the previous year, if we keep going the way we have been. But that alone, we can't even sustain based on the state. So, the town portion, they've increased by a million dollars, which is a seven percent plus increase in the town portion. They've really stepped up for us and really, I thank them for helping us out, because the state's not... State's not doing it. I mean, they just keep throwing more stuff on our shoulders, and unfortunately, they're not giving us much more, but I really do. I thank them profusely, because if not, we wouldn't be able to do this.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Before I close out this hearing, I do want to... I feel compelled to mention two things going forward. And the thing is this, that as we build the new high school, I want to remind everybody, because I just want to lay it on the table as best I can, there will be additional costs with the new high school. So, the two additional costs that we know will be there are a piece with additional groundskeeper because of all the work that we're doing in the fields and everything like that. And the second piece is, we don't currently have a maker space, and so we'll need a person to run the maker space for us. So, those are two positions that we know going forward, even though budgets may be tight. You know, we're building a new high school, and we're going to have to deal with those additions. Greg?
And we also have some... During the construction, we have to have extra busing costs because we don't have the fields that we are used to having. So, that was a bump in one of the budgets for the extra transportation for the teams to go.
Somebody's not having any home meets, right? The track?
The track is not having any home meets. Yeah. The track will be in cooperation with the chair with Carver and working with them and possibly Bridgewater State, but we have to transport those students there, especially a large team like the track team. So... And tennis will be at Camp Avoter, and softball's going to be down the park, and baseball will be down the park, and we hope to contain our JV baseball team up at the high school as long as we can, especially in the first phase. So, we'll be going into the phasing, so...
So, with that, the chair went into the motion to close the budget here.
So, move for a second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will close the budget meeting and resume our regular meeting. Yes, sir. Did you have a question? Oh, I thought you were... Next on our agenda is consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented this evening. Mr. Chair, a second. Second.
Discussion. Mr. Oakley?
I abstained from the minutes of November fifteenth because I wasn't here, but can I still vote to approve the consent?
You have a right to abstain. You don't have to abstain, just so no one has to abstain or not abstain. Generally speaking, people abstain because they're not here, and that's fine, but they don't have to. You're not required by... There's no rule or regulation that requires you to.
Oh, okay.
So, just so you know.
Got it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Just before we end, Chair would just like to make a brief comment about MSBA. So, on Monday night, superintendent, myself, and Brian was there, the selectmen voting unanimously to sign the contract agreement with Fontaine Brothers. Then yesterday was a construction meeting kickoff, and I know the superintendent was there for a brief period of time, and Mr. Hutchinson was there, and a variety of people. As long as everything goes, construction starts next week.
Yes.
So, we begin the process of a high school next week. Well, we still working that out.
They present a rough schedule yet?
No. That was part of the discussion, passing our schedule to them, saying, "Here it is, and this is the expectation." So...
When will they get back?
Clearly, in the kickoff meeting, the expectation was, they keep with our schedule.
But are they... Is there going to be a meeting next week or something, that where they'll have it back to us with a new, like, their schedule?
I think they're coming up with the three-month, and that's what's coming back. But they will now have regularly scheduled meetings, the whole group of them. It was a large group of people at the kickoff meeting, including the owners, McFail Engineering, David Werner Associates. It was everybody that's going to really work on the project was there. Mr. Fontaine Senior, Mr. Fontaine Junior, he had four of five of his direct employees that are going to be supervisors on the site. Our compass group was there and Strong, I think there were five members of compass were there, and DRA was well represented. So, it became very clear, there was a slideshow with the phasing, and it became... It was very clear to them that this is the recommended phasing. If you have any recommendations for changes, we'll accept those, but keeping within our time parameters.
Excellent.
So...
Thank you.
And I do also, just from an MSBA perspective, but not really from our really school perspective, I want to thank Adam and Sean, because they've really pushed the idea of filming and taking pictures of from the start to finish of the new high school, and so they're going to make it so that people can see, constantly see pictures happening, and, you know, we're working on a wide variety of things. Maybe there'll be a live feed, and people can go out and look and see what's going on, or maybe the pictures each day, but we'll see what happens. But, you know, they're committed to making sure that, you know, kids get to get involved in those types of things, and, you know, we've been as transparent as we possibly could with all the material we have, and so we're going to be transparent with the building, too.
And every one of those workers will be corried, even though they will not come in contact with students. They'll have their own offices and their own porta-potties and things like that. They'll be sort of have a fence, they'll be fenced in, if you will. The whole site will be fenced in, but every single person that comes on there will be corried, which my administrative assistant, Ann Gagnon, is trying to get used to wrap her head around the fact that every single one of these is going to... People is going to need to be corried, so...
Wouldn't it be general governments?
Yeah, well, wouldn't you think so?
We'll all work together.
Wouldn't you think so?
With that, Chair, I understand the motion to adjourn. So, moved.
Do I hear a second? Before I take the vote, I would remind everybody that our next meeting is March fourteenth. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, and thank you very much, everybody.